Good evening and welcome to the Crestwood School District electronically held special meeting, budget hearing of June 30th, 2020. I call the meeting to order at 5:33. Trustee Secretary Kaminsky, will you please take roll?
Sure. Mrs. Ansonik is absent. Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Mrs. Falas?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Mrs. Krzanek.
Here.
And Ms. Sinja is here. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The first thing on the agenda, or the purpose of the meeting is the budget hearing. Pledge of allegiance? I know we haven't been doing it, but why don't we do it this time? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Okay. Trustee Kaminsky, can you do the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if there was one.
It's not on the sheet, but it is there.
I, okay.
Can I make the motion?
No, I think the motion should come from a member, but I believe that we have to actually go into the hearing. No, I'm sorry, you're right. You're right. Whoever has the motion.
Okay, so.
It's just the approval of the agenda and.
Okay.
Approval of the agenda.
Do you want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the June 30th, 2020 board agenda.
Support?
Thank you.
That was seconded by.
Mr. Garcia, I got it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion by trustee Berry, seconded by trustee Garcia, that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the June 30th, 2020 board agenda. All in favor? Or any questions? Any questions?
Lynn?
Yes?
Was my vote changed that was incorrect from the meeting prior to that, that was recorded wrong in the minutes?
That would be a question for Kristen, because she does the recording of that. I just take down the notes and yours was a no, so I will make sure she's on the line and she makes sure that that's changed.
Yes, the amended minutes will be at the July 27th meeting.
Thank you very much, Kristen. So I think that's, yep, your answer.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
You're an a?
Yes.
So five to one.
Got it.
Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is from Ms. Penny Morgan for our budget hearing.
Thank you very much. So on our screen is our budget hearing, so we're going to be talking about the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year budget. So. In our district budget, we have several funds that contain the budget. Our general fund is our largest fund. I've broken out the state and federal grants into its own separate fund. The special services fund contains food service, childcare, and student agency funds, which are considered activity accounts and building activity accounts, such as band accounts or any fundraiser money that they raise throughout the year, whether it's rowing club, honor society, class of 2020, all the way down the list. And then we have our debt fund and our capital projects for the bond funds. How we collect our money is through non-homestead tax collection from the municipalities. And we also, the non-homestead tax is property tax on business properties, vacation homes, vacation land, and rental property. This does not include primary homeowner tax. The tax rate for the general fund is 18 mils of the non-homestead millage, which the voters think you voted in November of 2019 to add the three mils, so that when we do the headly rollback each year, that we do not lose out on any of our 18 mils for those funds. The state education tax is six mils. All taxpayers pay this and it's distributed at the state level. Homeowners pay six mils for education. This money is sent directly to Lansing, and then the funds are redistributed to districts based on the per pupil allocations. Our revenue comes from the foundation allowance or our per pupil allocation. This allowance is based on the formula that includes student count, and it's 10% of the previous spring and 90% of the fall count, and that would be our pupil allocation. This year in 2020, 2021, the budget, we are using the student count of 4,135 students. We're not expecting any student loss, so our enrollment is going to stay flat, is what our prediction is going to be. As you can see, over the last 20 years, our enrollment started at 3,100 students, and it's increased now to 4,135 students as of fall of 2019-20. So we're predicting that the fall of 2020-21 will be at 4,135 students as well. As you can see, our population has really raised over the last 10 years. We've raised, 700 students have increased over the past 10 years.
Ms. Morgan, I think one of our trustees had a question.
No, I just wanted to say, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
I'm really happy to see these numbers on the horizon. I'm sure it's due to the new administration and the trust that everybody has. So thank you so much for that.
Okay.
I just thought it was an interesting fact to look at and see the trend of the districts. Our foundation allowance for 2021, we are projecting to be a decrease of $700 per student because of the economic status of the state. This number is unknown at the time, so we're being very conservative in projecting this amount as a loss per student. So the new per pupil foundation that we'll be budgeting will be $7,546 per pupil. As you can see, from 1999 to 2000, we went from $6,445 per pupil up until the $8,246. So over the years, as time went, we've gone up and down. And in 2011, '12 is when Governor Snyder took $450 per student from the budgets in order to balance the budget. So that's where we took the money, and so we've been slowly going back up. And now, if we hit that $700 mark, we're going to drop back down to about 7,500, so right around here.
Ms. Morgan, did somebody else have a question?
I was just going to add to that, Madam Chair, just real quick. Sorry, Penny.
Oh, no, you're fine.
And I know Ms. Morgan is going to go into more detail on this as we move forward, but I just want the community and the public and the boards to understand, this $700 reduction per student is a current prediction of a worst-case scenario based on the pandemic. Because just to reiterate to the board and to the community, our fund balance, our allotment from the state comes from sales tax. And right now, based on the reduction in sales, there's most likely going to be a reduction in sales tax that has been collected, and therefore, a prediction of $700 loss per student is what is being circulated. And therefore, we're looking at that as a worst-case scenario. I just wanted to make that clear, that this isn't, this isn't an exact number. This is a prediction, and we're trying to predict on a worst-case scenario. I'm sorry, Penny, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Oh, don't apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mussalem.
Welcome.
So as part of our expenses, the school districts are part of the Michigan Public Schools Employee Retirement System, or MIPSPERS. Each year, the MIPSPERS retirement rate fluctuates. In 2020-21, it'll range from 35.47% to 42.72%. So for the budget purposes, we've averaged it out to be about 41% for retirement rates. However, each year, the state has been offsetting that increased costs with 147 C funds. They send the money directly to the districts. It's 14.51% of the overall retirement rate, but then we automatically have to pay that right back on the 20th of the month. So it's money coming in, but coming out, but our expenses have to recognize that we get the 42% and 41% in the retirement. So that's significant cost that fluctuates each year. So the expenditures in this budget are based on some of the following assumptions for the 2021 school year. That the teachers will receive, per contract, a step and salary schedule increase. That the administrators will receive a step and salary, 1% salary schedule increase per the contracts. And that our retirement rate is 41%. Of the 41%, actual cost without the offsetting revenue is 26.49%. We've also eliminated capital outlay purchases that we had added this year. Those included the purchase of vehicles, tractors, and different other items. We've added back the transportation costs that we caught this year due to the COVID. We had the letter of understanding with Dean Transportation to work with us so that we could keep our current bus drivers employed and cut the cost of the district. So between the two of us, we partnered, saved the district money and keep our employees or Dean's employees and our bus drivers employed and ready to work for us next year when we come back.
Mrs. Sinja?
Yes.
I just wanted to, here, let me raise my hand if I could. There we go. If I could, Penny, thank you. I know there's a lot that you need to cover, but one thing specifically in regards to Dean, thank you to you and the administration, as well as Dean and his administration for working regarding this, because there's a huge savings that, I shouldn't say huge, I'm sorry, let me retract that. There's the savings to the district, because they have been very cooperative in providing to us and working with, moving into the future. Thank you.
The savings to the district was approximately $110 million. Once we receive all the final invoices for this Dean Transportation, I can show that savings to you, but.
Wow, that was a good move.
The other thing that we did to the new budget is we added back the pool staffing costs. We had cut that out of the 18-19 budget, I mean, I'm sorry, the 19-20 budget, because the pool was closed half the year, so those costs kind of went away. I did put back the unspent supply line homes that we removed for the 19-20 budget due to the lack of spending with COVID. We increased the athletic budget to 750,000. In 1920, it ended up to be 720,000, so we increased it back up to the 750,000. We will be decreasing one elementary counselor position, also two resource room positions, one elementary Spanish teacher position. And that's awesome.
Penny?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, I don't know if this is the proper time to discuss this, but our pool, we're not opening our pool until this is all over, correct?
Correct.
To the COVID scare.
Correct. But we wanted to put the money back in so that we were safe on.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that, I heard that chlorine is supposed to kill all the bacteria, but I heard that no pools, because they're close contact with other people that could cough and sneeze and whatever, that we wouldn't be opening pools. But I just wondered, want to make sure Crestwood doesn't open ours.
Good question.
Yeah, that's right.
Madam Chair, if I may, Penny, I'm sorry to interrupt. And just as a clarification to the board and the community, what you see here with decrease in staffing, we did not eliminate teaching positions. I want to reiterate, we realigned and we restructured. Where we eliminated positions based on attrition and realignment, we did not eliminate people. So I want people to understand that. Anybody watching this, no one has been laid off or surplused in this process. These decreases are due to our realignments and our restructuring of the district. And at the end of Penny's presentation, I have also a sheet I would like to share that helps break that down a little bit more, that was shared with the board, but just so that it can be reiterated. So everyone understands that we have not laid anyone off.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Trustee Kaminsky, you had a question? Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if this was, the decrease were eliminated positions. So Dr. Mussalem answered that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And these are positions that going forward into the 1920 school year, I mean, I'm sorry, the 2021 school year. The 1920 budget, I will go over that amendment in the action items, but it's not as detailed as this one.
So, Madam Chair?
Trustee Berry?
So are you going to discuss the savings, the amount that has been saved with all these decreases?
When we discuss the 1920 budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course we are.
Okay, so continuing on with the 2021 budget, all building budgets were kept consistent with the 1920 budgets, depending on their per pupil count. And the unemployment costs remain the same, because at this point, we have not put people on unemployment. We've been paying our staff, so we've remained that constant. So our general fund, beginning fund balance will be, with a projected cost, a projected fund balance at the end of 1920, 8,248,233,000. This amount recognizes a $1.1 million savings in the 1920 budget that we'll discuss in the action items. Our budget revenue for general, yes, ma'am?
Trustee Berry, I think. Who was that?
No, I just said yay.
Oh.
The budgeted revenues are $39,413,735, excuse me. Our budgeted expenditures are $42,69,104, which would put us into a budget deficit this year of $2,655,369, but we would end with overall fund balance of $5,592, $5,592,864. Now, this deficit, we're asking the board to adopt. It is not a fund balance deficit. It's a one-year deficit, so that we can, when the cuts come in from the state, because this is our projected worst-case scenario, we want to be able to not lay off individuals and not make drastic cuts when we turn around and receive some of those funds back. Up at $39 million, $42 million, the expenses are broken out into basic programs. This is the big block right here of 55.58%, and basic programs include elementary programs, middle school programs, and high school programs, as well as summer school programs. The next big chunk that we have is in added needs programs, which is 10.63%, which falls into the category of special ed and also CTE programs. We also have approximately 5% of our budget in support services, which is social workers, speech pathologists, psychologists, OTs, PTs, and teacher consultants. Then we have support services, which would then be administration as instructional or curriculum instruction. We also then have the superintendent and the board office, which is approximately 2% of our overall district cost. Then you look at this big chunk here, which is 5.5%, and that's school administration, which is the principals and the secretaries in each building. Then you have 1.25% at business services, which includes the finance office, payroll accounts, payables, and anything else to do with the business aspect. You have operations and maintenance, which is 8.48% of our budget. Transportation is 4.21%. Support services is personnel or human resources. It's also technology. Pupil accounting, that's at 1.89%, or a little over, under 2%. Support services at 2.9 is, this is athletics. So our athletic budget is 1.8% of our overall budget. Community services, which is the pool aspect of it, is less than 1%. It's about 0.02%. Construction or facility use or transfers to other governmental units, that's 0.6%. And fund modifications is if we need to support the debt fund or the food service fund, and that's 1.76%.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a couple questions from trustees. Mrs. Kaminsky?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I just had a question about where we purchased the truck and tractor from. What fund did that come out of?
It came out of general fund, and it was out of the two sixes. So it would have been in here last year, in the 1920.
So that was budgeted and did not come out of the equity fund?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mrs. Berry?
That's what I was going to ask about. You see how the numbers in some areas are larger? It's because we were lacking staff in those areas, correct? And we finally were able to fill those positions. And I know where you're seeing operations, is that because of what Sue was talking about, having to order? We haven't had a new vehicle since 1971?
Actually, no, because this is actually the 2021 budget. So this doesn't reflect the 1920 budget. However, this is close to other districts, so it's really in line with other districts. It may be a half a percent higher, but that is because we do have some additional funds in the supplies and the capital outlay, so that we can still continue to improve our district.
But, and if I may add to that, and I, to answer trustee Kaminsky and trustee Berry's question, more in terms of what we did 1920 to what we're doing 2021, when we went and purchased the tractors and the trucks and the equipment needed for operations and to beautify our district, our concern was, would we have to dip into the equity fund to do that? And we did not. We were able, through our budgeting and through our realignment and our restructuring, to use actual general fund money to make those purchases in 1920. So we did not touch our equity fund in 1920 for those purchases. And then, when Penny looks at to budget for 2021, she takes those items into consideration, where, okay, this is what we're possibly going to need for next year. And I will tell you, we spent more in capital outlay together, us as a board and our team, in the last six months, in order to beautify and to help our district get to the next level, and we did not have to dip into equity fund. So I think that is key and crucial for everyone to understand.
Yes, that's what I wanted.
Much needed.
Yes, it was definitely much needed, and thank you for clearing that, because we want everybody to know that we have not, correct, touched a dollar out of equity fund.
Correct.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Now, we're up to date with a lot of things that we weren't.
Absolutely.
Speaking of your equity fund?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
This is where you can see on the graph that in 2002, 2003, you had a 4.8% fund, or 4.8 million, excuse me, fund balance. Over those years, and when we took the hits, we've grown, we continue to grow. And see now, in 1819, we had a fund balance of 7.056 million. Now, as I were predicting, at the end of 1920, we're going to have an $8.2 million fund balance. So that's a 1.2, almost $1.2 million savings that the current administration has recognized with the realignment of staff and through attrition and utilizing our resources. In addition, this is also where all of the capital outlay came out of. So those purchases, that was what we were talking about.
Wow.
If we didn't have those purchases, we would be adding more to the fund balance. So this would have been higher.
Madam Chair, if I may add, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Kaminsky, my apologies.
Yes, I just wanted to give kudos to the administration, because I don't think the public understands the effort of work put forth by administration, the union, the actual employees, the board, in order to make these accommodations, so that A, we didn't have to lay off anybody, B, we actually are providing more services, and in fact, have hired people, and we just streamlined. So kudos to administration and the union and all the staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to the board for supporting us through these difficult decisions in times, because we could bring forward to you 50 different ideas, but you as a board supported us in this process, so thank you.
You all said.
Dr. Mussalem?
Kudos.
Lynn?
Yeah, hold on, we got, that's okay, I'll put you down.
I can't see anybody. I'm so sorry if I'm butting in.
That's okay. We got Mrs. Berry.
Go ahead, Ed. Go ahead. Ed can go ahead.
Well, I, no, let Colleen go first, because she doesn't, she can't.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Krzanek.
Okay, I would just like to say that our fund balance has always been.
Good.
Phenomenal because of the wonderful work our business managers have done. We, when other districts were falling off, being covered by the state, we were always above and doing great. We still are. As a matter of fact, we're adding to it. I'm so proud of the work that we've done since I've been here, and that was 22 years. But it's always been great. Our fund balance has always been phenomenal, and I am appreciative for all the work that Dr. Mussalem and Penny have done to keep it that way. So, my comment.
Thank you. Who do we want? Nadia or Ed?
I just wanted to say, sorry, Ed, that with COVID, the administration has done a phenomenal job. Everybody kept their job. We were able to keep Dean's Transportation on. They saved us $100,000. All the stuff that has been happening, and like you said, Sue, thank you to all the unions, to the superintendent, and to everyone for helping out in this. And we were able to get through this, where other districts are struggling right now to get through this.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thank you, Nadia. Mr. Garcia?
I'll make my comment short. I know that Penny wants to keep moving on with the presentation, but I echo the sentiments of the other members. We were not, who knew that this was going to happen? But the administration continues to push forward, and they are doing so much more with less and still able to save, which is very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I had one question. Ms. Morgan, do you know what the percentage that is of our fund balance?
It's approximately 16%, 17%.
And I think that's what our policy is on the high side, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So as we were talking, this is the worst-case scenario budget that we're presenting. We didn't look at other options to present to you. We looked at the zero change and per pupil change, so zero-dollar change, which then would have added to our fund balance this year. So if our per pupil amount stayed exactly the same as it was, and the state did not cut, because of all the realignment and all of the changes that we made in 1920, for 2021, we would have projected an increase in our fund balance of approximately $500,000. If the state decides that they're not going to cut 700,000, and they're only going to cut 350, $700,000, I'm sorry, $700 per student, and they're only going to cut $350 per student, we'll end up with a fund balance of 7.3 million, which is a little over the current fund balance in 1819 of 7.056. And that again is due to all of the realignments and the work with unions and the staffing and everyone involved to streamline the benefits and streamline our resources in order to make the necessary cuts to help move the district forward. And so then you can see, if, worst-case scenario in the purple bar here, with a $700 per student pupil loss, the fund balance would drop to 5.8 million, just below 6 million. So because of the fact that these three scenarios, and there's so many unknowns, and the budget is extremely fluid, the administration and the district is recommending that the board will accept the budget with the $700 per pupil loss.
Ms. Morgan, we have a couple more questions. Miss Kaminsky?
First off, Penny, thank you so much for putting all of this work in here and making it so easy for us to, that aren't good with the numbers, to understand and to easily recognize the difference. So the amended budget that we're going to be hopefully approving tonight would be using the scenario that we have a $700 per pupil cut. And again, that's an unknown, but that's reflective in the.
I hate somebody who is unhappy.
Monroe?
That's reflective in the pink part of the graph, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Mussalem?
So I wanted to, oh, okay, I wanted to add to this as well. So one of the things, well, what I love about Penny and Linda with, on this team, is we are very, we're going to be very conservative when we do our budgeting. And we wanted to go with the worst.
Oh, is Freddie home?
Yeah.
He's not answering his phone, so.
I'm sorry, you guys, I'm sorry.
We wanted to go with the worst-case scenario, and I wanted to just talk about a couple things real quick. First off, if this worst-case scenario goes through, our goal will be, the following year, if we get back to where we're supposed to be, it will be putting money back into the fund balance. It'll take us one year to get back up to where we need to be, because what will happen is, if it goes to 700, then it's, you know, hopefully it doesn't stay at 700. Hopefully, it goes back to where we were, because then sales tax will be back up to where it was prior. Now, worst-case scenario, and I want to make this clear, if, God forbid. If, God forbid, we end up with two years of the same type of situation, then we're gonna have to take concessions. And uh that's concessions by all of us. That's not just, you know, the superintendent's office, everyone across the board. We're gonna have to take concessions. But we believe that through this first year, if we can get through this first year together in this worst case scenario, if there are concessions that have to be taken in year two, we believe that we will be able to come up with some solutions for those concessions. But at this time, as Mrs. Morgan mentioned, if we were to ask for concessions now and or make layoffs now and that seven hundred amount does not stay at seven hundred, goes to three fifty, then we're gonna be, you know, bringing people back. And then we're gonna be putting money back. You know, it's for this process, we really believe worst case scenario, we will be able within a year to two years to put back into our fund balance what we would have been if we had this break even point. And I do want to reemphasize, what is in white there, the seven point three million, which is a three hundred and fifty dollar cut? As Mrs. Morgan mentioned, because we were able to save one point two million this year and add that to our equity fund, that allows us to break even if we got a three hundred and fifty dollar cut. So and furthermore, if the seven hundred dollar cut does happen, if we weren't able to save that one point two million, then you'd be looking at a four point six million dollar equity fund. So you know, we we've made the adjustments as needed and everything's up in the air right now. And we're 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 hopeful. We're hearing some good things coming out of Lansing and the federal government that there may be possibility of support for us not to have that seven hundred dollar cut. So.
Great.
Trustee Falas, do you have a question? Okay, do you have that thing just so that I don't miss you when it comes and we get past on the corner, on the upper left corner, there's where you can raise your hand? That way I know who's coming.
I don't have that.
You don't have that? Yeah, there's a whole bunch of different ones. That's how I've been keeping track of it. So it's a lot easier because it remains on the screen until and you don't have to worry about waving or stuff.
Okay.
We'll have to find, we'll have to find out where that is for you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, my question was, is the um in the pur- purple or lavender, however, whatever color that is, is that one based off the student count, um, the firm enrolled student count or an anticipated or estimated count?
It's the anticipated four thousand one hundred and thirty-five students, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one?
Nope.
And we're anticipating that enrollment based on our current enrollment and based on the registration we're getting in right now. So we're not looking at a decrease or an increase. Now, if things really work out, we get an increase in enrollment, plus we don't get that seven hundred cut, then we're looking at even more money in our equity fund.
Awesome.
Madam Chair.
Um, yes, Ms. Berry?
Can you, um, Penny, can you uh differentiate to the public the difference between the equity fund and the fund balance so they understand what we're talking about when we when we're saying we're not touching it?
It's actually the same thing. The fund balance and the equity fund are the same thing.
And that's my fault, trustee Barry. I tend to mix those two together. My apologies.
Just, okay.
So it's the fund balance, the equity, it's the same thing, but.
If for for the
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, it's like a saving, it's our savings account. It's like you own a home. You pay down that home, you have the equity in the house that's available for you. Same type of thing. It's a lot of people call it the rainy day fund.
Right.
Because the unbalance is by state law, you have to have three percent. Am I correct, Penny? Three percent?
Five percent.
Five percent. By state law, you have to have five percent. Auditing firms recommend ten percent. Currently, if we see no change, we're at fifteen, sixteen percent. My goal as a superintendent in the next five to six years is to hopefully be at twenty percent. That's my goal. Okay? And the reason we have that is because of additional expenses that may incur that are unanticipated such as cuts from the state in our funding, such as we have a boiler system go down in a school, we gotta replace it. Anything that's unanticipated. So the higher your fund balance, equity fund, rainy day fund, savings account, whatever we wanna call it, the safer you are as a school district. And um the problem too, madam chair and trustees and and everyone is there's a lot of districts that don't have a strong um fund balance as we do. And that seven hundred dollar cut could really destroy some districts.
That's exactly my point.
So.
That's what I was, that was the point I was making.
Exactly, so.
Have to fund balance.
Yes, so I wanted to just to explain because I didn't want to confuse people by using different terminology, but I'll stick to fund balance, Penny. I'm sorry.
That's okay. The strong fund balance allows us to get through twenty twenty-one without the cuts um to staffing or the layoffs that other districts may be facing or the concessions that a lot of districts may be facing for the twenty twenty-one school year. So so into moving forward with our presentation. As I explained prior, I broke out the funded programs. Funded programs include Title One, Title Two A, uh Thirty-One A, which is at risk, Title Three, which is ESL, um bilingual. So any program that is from the state or the federal government that money coming in should not impact the general fund. So money coming in and being spent is supplemental money to what you should be providing to students every day. In order to keep better track of these funds or these dollars, I've moved them out into their own fund so it's easy to identify and pull them out separately. The majority of the funded programs run on the state fiscal year, which is October first through September thirtieth. District's fiscal years are July one to June thirtieth. Our final allocation for most of them will probably not be here until late September, even possibly October. The state must have their budget in by October first. However, with all of the different changes and the uncertainty that gets pushed into late September. Uh, the budget for the twenty twenty-one funded program budget is going to be consistent in the beginning of the year with the nineteen twenty funded budget. And that's because so many of the grants, um, dollar amounts, the final amounts and the carryover amounts are unknown at this time. They're not finalized with the state. But our total funded project budget will be rolled over at six million two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. So as you can see from our grant funds, we get two point seven million in state sources and that includes Thirty-One A, our GSRP program, our ESL bilingual program, and if I'm, I think that's it because I can't remember them off the top of my head, so I apologize.
We also, Penny, we also get out of that, we get some money for robotics and STEM through Title Four. So that also is rolled in there.
No, that Title Four is in federal. But robotics is in state sources.
Yeah, it's in state sources.
Yep. So federal sources are all our title programs, which is Title One, Title Three, Title Four, um, Title Two A. Those are our federal sources. Then we have transfers which come from local sources or this ten thousand dollars is our PDIS money that comes from Wayne Risa. And then fund modifications is transfers from other funds into here. We have this hundred and twenty thousand dollar fund transferring from general fund into the grant fund to cover the rest of the preschool GSRP cost. Our GSRP cost goes over what we're allocated by the state. But so we want to keep all of that cost together so that we can see it. So we've transferred money into there.
Okay.
Oops, sorry. As we break down, we've got four point four million instructions. So in direct program services, we have one point six million in support services, which would include social workers, speech, um, I apologize. Also in federal sources is IDA, which is special education funds from federal government. So support services would be social workers, psychologists, um, things of that nature. Then we have community service that we have to provide in Title One, which is seventy-two thousand and transfer out of fifteen thousand. Which that is part of our indirect cost that the district goes into general fund because in the federal grants, the the grants are allowed to charge an indirect cost. So this fifteen thousand will go back to the general fund. And again, these budgets are based off the nineteen twenty budgets and we roll them forward. Our special services fund is our cafeteria and our childcare fund. Excuse me, we have local sources of two hundred and fifty thousand, state sources of a hundred and fifty-two thousand and federal sources of one point eight million. The federal sources here are really the community eligibility program. And so that is all of the federal money for eating breakfast and lunch for all of our students who get those meals without cost to their families.
It's all of them. Yep.
Mm-hmm. And if I say CEP, that's the community eligibility program. So I tend to use acronyms, so just just stop me.
Madam Chair, Penny, I'm sorry. I do want to also state that prior to our administration, the board approved for the CEP program. Your approval for the CEP program allowed us to serve uh the lunches during the pandemic. So without that CEP program, it would have been a little bit more of a hurdle to jump. So I want to thank the board for that.
So of the expenditures.
I just wanted to give kudos to all the people who handed out the food and and uh volunteered their time to get these kids food for themselves, you know, for our children in our district. It was a wonderful thing.
Nice.
So as you can see, the expenditures are projected to be equal to the revenue. Ideally, you want the cafeteria and the childcare fund to break even. In the past, in this district, we've always had a small fund balance. This in nineteen twenty, we did utilize that fund balance to buy some new serving lines and new equipment. So that's why the fund balance has decreased. And so in order to keep with it, we've just projected a zero fund balance. Again, these budgets are fluid. And in October, November, when we get more definition of allocations, we'll be doing a budget amendment typically around right before Thanksgiving is when I typically do a budget amendment.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that's where we, it from this fund is where um the cafeteria, food service
Mm-hmm.
would purchase all the tables and stuff like that. Is that where, or and you said serving lines, but that's how we maintain that area, which I think is awesome. At least then it doesn't come out of the general fund. It comes right out of this fund and it's used for cafeteria.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Our special services fund or agency funds or activity accounts in nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty, sorry, in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, um, the state of Michigan passed guidelines that the activity funds had to have a fund ba- uh budget. So this is why this is a new budget for you. Um, because activity money is so fluid and the deposits are in and out sometimes so quickly that we put a million dollar balance for each of them so that we can maybe accommodate and we wouldn't have to raise the budget for going over expenses or revenue at any given point. Capital projects?
Madam Chair, um, Penny, what are you, if we haven't had it in the past, what are you basing the million dollars off of? Like what, what, what did you use to come up with that?
I looked at history of the revenue that we've collected in activity accounts and expenses. And it's gone anywhere from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand in a year. So that's money in and out, so it doesn't affect general fund whatsoever. With the activity funds, if they don't have the money in their activity account, I don't allow them to spend the money. So until a deposit is made for the activity account, they can't access any funds. So it's, it is seriously always a zero balance fund.
Okay. Ms. Morgan, that's typically what the students pay, what we have to pay out for those expenses, right? So it's nothing, no money from the school district. It's just like you said, an in and out from the students.
Typically, there's a fund balance in there or a balance in the activity accounts because of the fact that they carry over from year to year. Um, it so the million dollars is just because that's the way that they put it into law now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Of course. So with the capital projects fund, the bond fund, we believe that the end, at the end of nineteen twenty, there will be a fund balance of one point three million dollars for the bond, which is remaining for building improvements. And the one point three will be budgeted accordingly to the projects that we have on the list is when we do a budget presentation, not a budget presentation, when we do a presentation for the projects so that the board can decide which ones we're ready to go forward with. And that'll be forthcoming, probably, my guess is August. Then we have our debt fund, and the debt fund is the funds that we utilize to pay for any bonds that we've reached instantly past or prior. So this is all the money we've borrowed, um, our payments that are due this year. That concludes the nineteen, the twenty twenty-one budget hearing. Uh, are there any questions from the board?
If you have any. Okay, Mrs. Kaminski's raised her hand. Um, Madam Chair, thank you. Penny, I just wanted to thank you for a very nice presentation. And I know we keep saying that we're not talking about anything in the past and we're moving forward. But um taking all that in consideration, this is the most detailed budget with the most information and uh line item information that we've been presented with. So I really appreciate it. And just wanted to tell you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Garcia.
I know that I said this earlier, so I'll say this one more time. Um, thank you, Penny, because this is a very comprehensive um presentation. I know that Colleen is not able to view it on the screen. I'm sorry, Colleen. But I know she was, I'm sure she was not glazed over as we have said sometimes in the past. This was very comprehensive, uh, easy to understand, very detailed, and it's um well put together. And it's very obvious that you, your administration, uh, and and all those that participated worked very diligently, um, not only to provide a good presentation, but to also show how important it is that we all work together, especially with something that is critical and quite fluid, which is a budget.
Thank you so much. And and she does have a hard copy, so.
No, I, I, yes.
But I've been following along yet. Even even me with my uh uh Crestwood High School diploma, I can follow.
That's what I wanted to hear. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Berry?
Uh, yes, I would just like to say kudos to the superintendent and the administration for um making all these uh challenging decisions along with the board to make sure that we are not negative. So thank you to everybody for, you know, working together, coming together to do what's right for this district.
And I have one.
Madam President.
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, uh, the board is is has worked together so well in the last several months that it's it's um heartwarming to see that we have come from a a a very sad place to a wonderful place, and I hope it continues. This teamwork is the dream work, I'm telling you. And Dr. Mussalem, bless you because it's the, a lot, a big portion of this is working with you and having you let us be involved as much as we should be. And other uh past superintendents have not allowed that. So I really appreciate what's happening now.
Thank you, trustee. And I want everyone to also know that once this, uh, once we're done with this hearing and the board votes, all of this information will be on our website. It will be front and center. So anyone can go in and review it. We want to be completely transparent. And you know, if anyone ever has any questions beyond this hearing, they can always feel free to reach out to me and to Penny. And we can always support them in any questions that they have.
And I have, I have one little thing too, okay? I'd like to thank our administration, Dr. Mussalem, Ms. Morgan, Dr. Lazar, you are an excellent team and 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 I'm glad you're here at Crestwood. And um I would also like to thank our finance subcommittee. Because I know they thoroughly went over this yesterday, was it? With with um Ms. Morgan, and I'm sure it was a daunting task. I mean, but thank you for all you do.
In all honesty, it was really exciting to see the the uh end results. It really was. I was very proud.
And it was fun because every question we had, Ms. Morgan didn't like cringe. She answered it and knew it. It was just, it was so heartwarming.
This presentation was self-explanatory. It was wonderful.
Yes. Thank you. So having said all of that, Madam Chair. Yes. Um, I make a recommendation that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty amended budget as presented.
Hold on one second.
Hold on one second.
Supposed to be a members of the public to provide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
At this point, we'd like, um, Dr. Mussalem, do you know if we have any um um, members of the public that would like to address the board?
Actually, it would be questions to the budget. It'd be opening up the, it would be opening it up.
Provide the opportunity to address the board on questions. I'm just looking, yes, on the budget. Dr. Mussalem, you're muted.
Dr. Mousalem, you're muted.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you. There he is, there he is. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, thank you for telling me because you forget sometimes. Um, so I'm looking at the Google response sheet. And at this time, I don't have any questions. And I'm also checking to see if any other questions came through. I don't see any other questions that have come through at this time. Um, so I will turn it back to the board.
I I do have one more question.
Um, hold on.
Madam Chair.
Trustee, um, Crzanik.
I I really believe that before the recommended action is read that um, the the preamble to it should be read first before the recommended action.
Oh, Ms. Morgan will do that. You are right. Ms. Morgan will do that once we get there. Okay, um, trustee, um, Fawaz, did you have a question?
Yes, um, Penny, I didn't see in there, um, where is where the Divine Child um coming in money is?
The Divine Child funds that come in are actually part of our per pupil allocation. So it's part of the state aid with the per pupil allocation and it does not go separate. Um, in the line item budgets that you had in your Friday update, there was the state aid of twenty million dollars and nine million dollars. It's included in those two lines. It's not broken out specifically for Divine Child because it all goes into our general fund.
Okay, I thought we were gonna have it broken down for this meeting, no?
We had, I did present in the Friday update. No, I did present in the Friday update, the spreadsheet that included, and let me grab that for you. Um, and I don't have it on my screen, so I apologize. But it broke it down by year for the past five years of what the funding went into. For the general fund for the fund balance. So one second. It's approximately, it ranges for the past five years between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars. That gets added to the general fund above the expenditures that we have.
Per year?
Yes. So why would I add fifteen to the school year of fifteen sixteen? And if you don't mind, I'll pull it up. It'll just take a second.
Okay.
But you did provide that information to us, right, Ms. Morgan, in our Friday update?
We did have it.
Thank you. I do remember seeing it as well.
Um.
You're pretty fancy with that.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's good. Then it's right there.
Well, because she always has me walking down, hey, I need this, and she has it right away.
Yeah, so I have multiple screens that I have to work from.
How many monitors do you have?
Um, right at this moment, I have three.
Yeah, okay.
I can just go back to the page number if you want. Um, but I'm just thinking we're spending one point five per year, but are you saying we're only averaging like three to four hundred thousand coming in?
So if you look at, can you see it on the screens? So right here for the fifteen sixteen school year, let me get over a little bit. Our elementary F T E for the spring. And then you see the high school F T E and then the Divine Child total. So the foundation allowance for the or the revenue for the fifteen sixteen school year was one point six million. Our expenditures for Divine Child staffing was one point two million. So that four hundred and three thousand went directly into the fund balance or into the fund, the district's revenue stream, offsetting additional costs in the general fund.
So we, we profited, we profited of four hundred thousand plus.
In sixteen seventeen, there was a profit of six hundred and thirty three thousand.
Yeah.
In seventeen eighteen, there was a profit of three hundred and ninety seven thousand. In eighteen nineteen, there was a profit of four hundred and sixty two thousand. Now nineteen twenty, the fi- all the expenditures are not in yet. So right now, we have received two point three million, two point zero three nine million in revenue. We're just waiting for the final numbers for expenditures to come in and I didn't want to put a partial number in there so that the board was able to see the exact numbers.
Exact, actual.
Thank you very much. That's very thorough.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Penny.
Of course.
I hope we get to rest now.
Okay, um, Ms. Morgan, I think you're up for the preamble for the action item.
Okay.
Like you have been, but you know.
And, oh, now I have to find all that stuff. The pre, so what, I think that the next action item is actually the nineteen twenty budget amendment.
That's correct. That's correct.
Right.
Okay, so let me pull that up here. So what the nineteen twenty budget amendment took into effect was it looked at all of our projected revenues. And it looked at all the potential savings. So what I did is took the previous budget that was approved in the original budget of June of two thousand nineteen. And those were the numbers that were approved. So originally, it was forty eight million dollars. And forty eight million, and they were expecting a loss of of fund balance of ninety thousand. I broke those two out into general fund and the funded programs because again, I, as I explained previously, it's my belief that the grant funds or the funded programs should zero out and never impact fund balance. So then I took, went into taking the, look at the actual revenue and adding revenues increases and decreases, as well as the savings that we've had throughout the school year for the realignment of positions. And you can see in operations where I've added four hundred thousand, and that's all the capital outlay projects or all the projects, the beautification, the purchases of the equipment and all of those things that have been added in. And at the end, you can see that the fund balance is increasing by one point one million dollars, almost one point two million dollars for the nineteen twenty school year, which then brings it up to nineteen point four three percent.
Um, Ms. Morgan, Mrs. Kaminsky has a question?
Not really a question, but I want the public to understand that when a budget is approved, as the budget from last year was approved in June, um, it was expected to have a ninety thousand dollar deficit. And instead, we have increased, and I'm taking credit for this because the board hired Dr. Mousalem, Dr. Mousalem hired Dr. Lazar and Ms. Morgan. So therefore, we now put one point two million dollars more than anticipated into the fund balance. So thank you again.
Madam, Madam Chair, that's why I wanted the preamble to be um read because it shows an increased fund balance of one point one million dollars. And I wanted the the uh community to to hear that. And that's why I asked for her to read the preamble to the recommended action.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Please know with this, this budget, it is still projected. So there may still be line items or room where it is above that, or it may be below that. So it's, it's not finalized. This is a projected budget. So really, our fund balance may come in at one point three, or it may come in at one point oh. Yeah, I believe it'll be really close to this number.
Awesome.
Okay, then read.
Do you want to do the preamble? Do you have that, Ms. Morgan, now?
The preamble.
Where it says administration.
Oh, yep. Yes, I can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
So action, action item one?
The administration, the night, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget amendment. Administration is requesting that the Crestwood Board of Education adopt the amended two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as presented in attachment five A one. This amendment recognizes staffing changes which occurred throughout the year, additional capital outlay purchases and realignment of expenditures into appropriate classifications. Through the district staffing realignments and utilizing resources efficiently, the budget amendment anticipates an increase to fund balance of approximately one point one million dollars.
There you go. Madam Chair.
Mrs. Crzanik.
Chair.
Mrs. Crzanik.
That the Crestwood Board of Education approved the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty amended budget as presented in attachment five A one.
Support.
Support from. Yeah, we didn't vote yet, though, but we can.
Okay, thank you.
Um, who, who, I heard Ed and I heard somebody else, so.
I wrote Ed.
You what?
I heard Ed.
Okay, um, Mr. Garcia. Okay, um, motion made.
I'm sorry, Sue, I think you hit, and I think Sue had that motion originally. I'm sorry to butt in.
No big deal.
Okay, uh, motion by Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty amended budget as presented in attachment five A one. Any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair, I just want to say kudos, kudos, kudos. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, uh, you made us look like shining stars, and I can't thank you enough for being so diligent. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's go for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Can, can we do a roll call vote then? Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fawaz?
No.
Mrs. Crzanik?
Yes.
Okay, and myself is a yes. So the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Five to one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we get to move on to, yes, you're still on, right?
I am still on. The number two, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one proposed budget. Administration is requesting that the Crestwood Board of Education adopt the amended twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. It's not the amended, it's the original, I apologize, twenty twenty one budget as presented in attachment five A two. The budget, the proposed budget is a conservative approach to the uncertain future of the state funding due to recent events. This document is fluid and will be amended with new information when new information becomes available.
Madam Chair. Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes, I motion that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty one proposed budget as presented in attachment five A two.
Support.
Support.
Uh, Mrs. Berry? Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Kaminsky with a support by Mrs. Berry that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one proposed budget as presented in attachment five A two. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, um, can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote again. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Crzanik?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fawaz?
No.
And myself is a yes. That motion passes. Five to one.
I would just like to thank the board for your support, and I would also like to say and thank the subcommittee for going through the presentation and all of the line items with me last night. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you very much. So we are done with, I'm sorry, I'm going through the. So, yep, I'm going through the personnel report. Um, Dr. Lazar?
Mine isn't as exciting, but. No, our action item today um is there was a request for an unpaid leave. Uh, a custodian, Mr. Eric Wasamda, uh, from Riverside Middle School has requested a ninety day leave of absence without pay. He would return to work on August twenty eighth of twenty twenty.
Um, do I have a motion?
I got a question.
Do we, do we have to have a motion on the table first before, okay?
Yes.
We have a motion on the table?
No.
Hearing none, the motion fails.
Okay.
Okay, did you get that, Mrs. Kaminsky?
I did.
Taking recordings for that.
I did.
Okay, at this time, do we have any um comments from administration?
Madam, Madam Chair, just real quick.
Yes.
Um, I want to again thank the board for your support and your trust and your belief in what we are doing as a community, as a Crestwood School District. The board has been very crucial in helping us get through some difficult decisions. Uh, the, as mentioned by many trustees already, the unions have stepped up and been very supportive throughout this entire pandemic, union and non-union individuals. Um, we've had some very good conversations. And I will tell you, our motto has been since we started, that's what's best for kids, but fair for the, for everyone, you know, because that's key and that's crucial. I want to reiterate, I stated, you know, six, seven months ago, that I will be transparent. And I will answer any questions to the board and the community that are asked that I can legally answer. And I will tell you with this budget process, we are going to post all this information on our website so that people can look at it. And again, anyone has any questions, we are open. We want to discuss. We want people to know that we have nothing to hide. Um, and 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 I say this because I remember when I first came in and I spoke with the community members who came to me and discussed with me that, you know, they, they wanted to make sure everything was transparent. And I explained to them that, yes, we will be transparent and we will uh do what is in the best interest for our children and for our district. But sometimes those decisions that we make are not going to always be popular decisions. And um, I don't think anyone on the Board of Education or anyone that goes into a leadership role goes in for, you know, popularity. I believe we all go in to do what is right, no matter how difficult it may be. And I appreciate all board members for your support during this process. These have been, I, I mean, I love what I do. I don't wake up and go to work. I wake up and go to a lifestyle. And I love it. And I love being part of the Crestwood Schools. And I, one of the best decisions that I ever made was I applied for the position. And uh, one of the grateful things I, I always thank God for is that there were seven board members who put trust in me, and I appreciate that. And I want to tell the community, our focus is our kids. Our focus is our kids. It is our community. It is to be Crestwood Strong. It is to be a beacon. And I will do everything in my power to ensure that we represent that. I love this community. I love everyone I work with. Again, I wake up every morning and it's a lifestyle. We do not do anything because we want to be popular. We all do what we do because we got to do what's right. So thank you, all seven board members, for everything you do to help our community and our schools go to the next level. And I want to thank the community for their patience during this pandemic. It hasn't been easy. And but I've continuously said, patience is key because things are fluid and they continuously change, and we're staying on top of things. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mousalem.
Anyone else from the administration? I know Penny, you probably have a little sore throat there with all that presenting, presenting. Um, any um comments from cons or from the board?
I got it, Lynn. I just would like to say, um, I, I was born, came home from the hospital to my Dearborn Heights home, was raised here in Dearborn Heights, went to school in Dearborn Heights. My brother was a police officer in Dearborn Heights for thirty years. I love this community just as much as Dr. Mousalem said. Triple it for Mrs. Crzanik, and I will protect the kids at all costs. And that is my, my bow. And I think all of us feel the same way. It, 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 it's just a great community to live in. And I, I just absolutely am protective of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, trustee Fawaz?
Um, I do have a question uh for the upcoming school year. Um, are we, is the district going to just try to collect um donations for P P E? Or will there be a uh bidding that goes on for um for getting that, those items in or how, what's our like, what's our plan for that?
So we are currently receiving quotes on different P P E equipment. We um last, uh, I believe, I have to look back and see if I, I, but we're getting quotes. We're going to have um, we're going to have disposable masks available for the schools, for the students. But we're also going to be asking that families uh prepare students for the mask. So all this is going to be coming out within August as our task force finishes the process because we want our task force to be the ones that put together the direction we're going to go based on the governor's CDC recommendations. Um, we are currently getting quotes on sanitation stations. We're currently getting quotes on um sanitation products. Um, so we're actively involved right now getting quotes. And then if anything comes over the bid threshold, then we'll put them out for bid. And those will be coming to the board uh for approval as we get quotes and we find vendors that we can trust. But we are ahead of the game. We, like I said, we're going to be working on getting eight thousand disposable masks ready to go. Uh, we're also working right now to get possible visor shields for staff. Um, and again, the sanitation stations. But I will say that when this pandemic first started, I have to give Scott Jacobs and the business department a lot of credit because they jumped all over and they started ordering things as needed. And, uh, so we, and like the thermometers, for example. We, we, we have all the thermometers we need right now. Now are we ordering more? Yeah. We are willing to, to order more to have on stock just in case. Um, so like right now with athletics, you know, Mike Schley, the athletic director, he, you know, has it set up where they got thermometers at the schools and they're taking kids' temperatures, they're filling out the forms before they even start practicing. So yes, we're, we're already on that.
Do we have, um, posted on the site for local, um, contractors or companies or should they just contact Penny or how, how does that work?
We don't post them on the site because we're not going out for bid yet. So as what we're doing is we're working with our partner districts on who they order from. Cause we want to go through reliable sources as well as any, in, anyone that contacts me or Penny or Scott. We go through, we ask them for a quote, we check out their product. So until anything goes above the bid threshold, it won't be put out for bid. But prior to that, we are, anyone that approaches us or sends us any information. But we really are trying to work, the majority of our work with, uh, other vendors and other districts are using. And within the Wayne County Superintendent's, uh, uh, cohort, we constantly share different vendors that we use that we've had good experience with.
Okay, um, trustee Berry?
Yeah. So I wanted to say, I've had the pleasure of being on the capital outlay task force committee. And Scott does, did discuss today, the sneeze guards, that he will be saving us a ton of money by making the sneeze guards for all the buildings, which I thought was very, very generous.
Wow.
I wanted to say kudos to him for taking that project on.
Thank you, trustee.
Madam Chair, I, I can't see, so I don't know if I'm butting in, so let me know when it's my turn to speak.
Go, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to make Dr. Mousalem aware that tomorrow is going to be 93. And our schools have no air conditioning and I don't know if we supply our custodians with water. I don't know what we do. But I know it's unbearable at Riverside and at all the schools. It's really hard when the temperatures reach that degree. So I, I just want you to be aware that it's very, very tough on the custodians when the weather gets that hot.
Will do. I'll check with, uh, Mr. Jacobs to make sure that they have what they need and whatever they need from us, we will supply. I promise.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I do have something that I would like to say. Um, I want my fellow colleagues that are here tonight and Donna who is not, and I'm glad, I'm, I'm, I hope she's going to be feeling better, but I want you all at this time to pat yourself on the back. Because there's one job that we are totally responsible for and that's for hiring a superintendent. And I have to say that we did an awesome job. This man has been open and this, he's, this gentleman has been open and honest. Has empathy for every single human being. And if you need to discuss something with him, he's there. He's there for, I'm, you know what? I'm Crestwood proud and it's a lot to do with all of you. But, but.
I agree.
And he is the man that hired his administrative staff and just keep doing that excellent job. Dr. Mousalem, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I, could I add one thing?
Yeah. We had that connection. Go ahead.
So today the governor was on and a lot of people were on, um, meetings. She did allocate state funding, I believe it was 2.58 million to be used for PPE equipment. It did not say, you know, what was going to go on to each school district. But obviously we can't go out for bids till we know how much we need either. So I just wanted everyone to be aware that, you know, um.
Thank you.
Dr. Mousalem and his team are working as quickly as they can work. But when the governor announces something at three, probably at 3:30 when she said that, it's hard to, uh, have caught up. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Garcia?
Yeah, um, just a, a couple of things. I know that I had spoken to, um, you earlier, but I just wanted to say this one more time. Um, thank you to each and every one of you that have reached out to me in regards to the death of my, my youngest brother. Um, I greatly appreciate, um, you doing that. Uh, I do apologize that I did not return phone calls or text messages. Um, just was not, um, um, in the mind to do so. I also want to thank the board, uh, on the wonderful floral arrangement that arrived here. And I also would like to, uh, thank the Fawaz family for sending some food here. Uh, I truly appreciate that so much. Um, I would also like to say, and I know it's been said it, just say it again. Thank you to the administration. You're doing a fantastic job. And, uh, we continue to move forward. That's, that's all that needs to be really said is, is, is we're moving forward quickly. So we will be that beacon for other districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Berry?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate our new clerk. We're happy to be our own Linsenial. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
We are very proud of you Lynn.
Thank all of you.
We are honored to have you and, um, we're here to support you with whatever you need.
Thank you. And thank you for reaching out already. I'm going to get my ducks in a row and we're going to make this community more united. Okay, Dr. Mousalem, I'm going to be checking on you and we're going to, and I'm going to be doing it with the other school districts too, because we are one city, you know, but I kind of have it in on this one, you know, so, but. Thank you very much. I, I look forward to it. Okay, any other trustee comments?
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 I didn't do public comments yet. I kind of. Dr. Mousalem, were there any public comments?
There were no public comments.
Okay, okay. Um, I guess then we will now, um, motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by trustee Garcia, supported by trustee Crzanik that we. Yeah, Crzanik, that we, um.
Yep.
Adjourn this meeting at 6:50. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Wonderful night. Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Bye bye.